I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Honorable Mayor Ron Schaver.
President.
Councilmember Brian Erdialis.
Here.
Doug Shosow.
Here.
Allison Howe.
Here.
Clint Anderson.
Here.
Lynn Deal.
Here.
Kevin Lindell.
Kevin Lindell's here.
All present and accounted for. First item on the agenda is presentation and possible appointment of two new members for the Planning Commission. Mr. Bernation.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I've been trying to fill some spots in the Planning Commission for a while now, and before the last Planning Commission on August the 10th, we actually received two applications, and so we took both of the applications to the Planning Commission for review. You have in front of you those applications, one from Kayden Shuttleworth. Little note on him, he actually is a police officer for the city, and we've discussed it with legal counsel to make sure there's no issues if they sit on the Planning Commission, and there is none. And then we also have Dolores Del Campo. She indicated on her application, just so there's no confusion, that there were several boards that she was looking into, and with her, we've talked to her since, and she's just wanting to get active and participate in whatever way she can, and so she's very interested in being on the Planning Commission. And so the Planning Commission was fine with moving her application forward too, if that was indeed her request. And so both of them have indicated that they want to, and the Planning Commission has okayed this to come to you guys for approval, so happy to answer any questions.
So that'll fill the Planning Commission board?
Yes, that will fill the board.
In a while.
Great work.
I wished I could claim I prepared that, but...
Well, send our thanks to staff who've helped recruit the community members.
Okay.
With that, I would entertain a motion to appoint two members presented.
Your Honor, I offer a motion to appoint Kayden Shuttleworth and Dolores Del Campo to the Planning Commission.
Second. I have a motion by Allison Howe, a second by Doug Shosow. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. That motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Brett.
We'll let them know.
Next is a presentation on a bid request for in-kind services and fee waivers for Break the Silence United Way Race Event. Mr. Sampson.
Good evening, Council. I'll try to keep this quick and concise while addressing some important issues. It's been a while since we've had special events, as you can tell.
Are they legal?
Yeah, and we're going to address a little bit about that today. So what we have here is we have a request for fee waivers for Break the Silence Suicide Awareness Festival. To give a quick recap on this festival, this is a festival that's going on, this would be its fourth year. It's done by Break the Silence Incorporated, which has been running out of the Elks Lodge in the years past. They would usually go either the first or second weekend of September out of the Elks Lodge. This last year, they became a nonprofit 501(c)(3) and wanted to look at expanding. We were planning and working together in January on this, and before we know it, in February, the effects of COVID came in and made things difficult, and plans and changes and plans and changes have happened. This event is planned to go for September 5th, which is fairly quick, right around our door, and it shows how much changing and planning has needed to be done. But they're requesting very similar services to what the car show has requested in the past. In fact, they've been working with the car show and the Health Department on how they can get things organized and approved by the Health Department to hold this event. Things include the picnic shelter rental or picnic shelter at City Park, the use of the band shell, several additional picnic tables. They initially were planning on using the Armory as a place to host a couple of bands, but we'll no longer need that, so you can edge that out. And some trash units and police officer usage. There's also noted, as in other major events, that we don't have quantifiable figures on street closures, which have been included on your maps as well, and utility usages. So I have with me as well Kelly Paris, Tyler Holt from Break the Silence, and Shandra Jacobs with United Way here, the event organizers, to answer any questions you may have that I can't answer. We have also asked Mel Bustos from the Health Department to come, and he graciously has come to answer any additional questions in reviewing the plan from the Health Department's side. So if you have any questions for me, if not, I will turn the time over for them for questions they have.
Does anybody have any questions for Steve?
None for Steve, Your Honor.
Not yet, but don't go too far.
I will sit right here. I'll turn the time over to them.
I think we'll probably have some questions for you on it. This is kind of a rush deal, and you know, this is the first year. I've been to a couple of them that you've had in the Queens parking lot there over the last year or the year before, so...
Elks parking lot?
Well, was it one of your last ones? But...
Well, thank you for having us. We just want to say we're here to answer any questions.
You're requesting a shutdown of Ensign and State Street and the side streets in between there for a car show.
We're actually requesting the Main Street closures for the United We Race in order to utilize the local businesses downtown, and then we are also doing a poker run show and shine that we would utilize the first block of Main.
Okay. Just for clarification, can you explain so that we're all clear as to what you're proposing for the race type and the poker run? I personally am not real clear on what type of race and where it encompasses on there, so that's better.
So the race part is not actually a race per se that people will be running from one place to the other, but it's more of semi-mental and physical mini-competitions, so it's based off of the Amazing Race television show. I don't know if anybody has actually seen that, but it'll be two man teams, and they will be competing against each other. It's just to raise funds and raise awareness of what United Way of Morgan County does. And so they'll be moving from business to business, and they'll be led from business to business by different clues that they get at the end of each competition. Last year, we had it in the park. This year, we're wanting to do it down Main Street, utilize all the local businesses.
Okay, so it's not a marathon-type of a race that's going to take the entire street and that? Okay. That's why I was asking for clarification.
So it's just two different events squished together?
Yep.
We're partnering, yes ma'am, for the first year.
When I was reading through earlier, I was like super, super confused. I thought it was your proposal for the suicide awareness, and then you want to like slide in like a whisper to introduce your idea, and then your stuff would be coming later, so it's the same day, same times?
Yep.
Okay, so thank you. I was drowning, so. Kudos for reviewing the safer-at-home guidelines at CDPHG. I can tell that you guys really were intentional about trying to keep the event safe, so I really appreciate that. The biggest question for me is just how does it look? Plans look really solid, but on the day of, if you've got someone who's been in the beer garden a little bit too long, and they're super pissed off that they can't go in a certain place, like how do we keep the event wonderful, but also have some there to help keep that social distancing working?
Our plan actually for the beer garden includes one-way entry, one-way exit, and I have hired a security team to secure the beer garden specifically, to make sure when somebody goes out, we let somebody in. But they will make sure that we have no more than 175 at any given point inside the beer garden.
So you're expecting 1,500 was your initial number? That seemed...
Right.
...pretty large, and I don't...
That was on our original application that stated in January, so I did scale back. I lost probably...well, I had set for eight bands, and now I have four bands. So we are scaling back with the vendors and the entertainment to allow for the social distancing guidelines. We updated that number to 500.
Okay. I think I saw an email from between Tyler and John Brennan.
We're also trying to utilize our local businesses, bring attendees downtown for eating, drinking. We won't be having food vendors this year, so that we can utilize cables, Acapulco Bay, there's a bakery, Zazie's Coffee, so we just kind of wanted to bring everybody downtown and utilize those businesses.
So the maps have kind of been getting...they're all the same, but just different forms throughout the day that we've gotten. So are you asking to close Main Street from Platt to Railroad?
Correct. Our actual plan was submitted identical to car show's plan.
Okay.
And we've been working with Dave very closely on keeping our maps and grids up to date, so that we can have a successful car show as well as a successful Break the Silence. So he's two weeks out from Break the Silence.
Gotcha.
Car show.
So the race is the reason that you want to shut down the entire Main Street?
Correct. To utilize all the businesses from Block 1 all the way down to Railroad.
Mainly for safety reasons.
Have you spoke to the local businesses? Like Steve, have you heard anything, or you all talked to them all?
Correct.
We've got them...we already got the petition signed by 75% of the businesses that will be affected by it.
Okay. John, have you got anything that's like negative about it?
I'm sorry?
Have you received anything negative from the other 25%?
No, not from the community. I don't know that they've done much promotion of it at this point. I haven't heard of it, other than the paperwork that they've turned in to us.
Okay. And then who's providing the alcohol in the beer garden?
So I have Jamie Placoris working on the beer garden. She's actually done the beer garden for the Bob Stock and car show out of the Elks for about six years, I think. So she was reaching out to her vendors for the beer garden.
Okay.
I think it's Annheiser Bush. I'm not 100% sure where she's requesting that from. She's actually in charge of the beer garden for Break the Silence.
Okay. And Steve, are you familiar with the security team that they were going to hire for the beer garden?
Kelly had mentioned that she was going to have whatever, however many security people there for, up to 175. I don't know exactly which company it is. I hope it's the same one that you had mentioned last week.
Correct. It's Union Colony out of Currie.
It's the same company that municipal courts use for their security, and I think they've also done, if I remember correct, during Bob Stock at the Elks Lodge as well, when it's typically in their parking lot.
Okay.
So to say the specific people doing it, I don't know, but the company is one that the city contracts with as well, but we're different for municipal court and security.
Okay.
Yeah, we've been working with them for three years.
It sounds like you've done a lot of homework, getting everything ready, but I kind of like the idea to be able to do something this summer. We've all been not having any...I think Thursday night, they're going to have the art walk, and that's not as large, but we're all excited about just getting out and doing something. So, and we all love the car show, so maybe we'll see how this all goes. It sounds like you have covered most of your bases.
Correct. So we are trying to just raise as much awareness for mental health and suicide prevention, because we believe that it's an important cause, but even more now because of what's happening with COVID and this pandemic. So we're really just looking to do as much as we can to make our community safe and comfortable for the event, but also to raise awareness in order to let people know it's okay not to be okay. That kind of is our mission.
The kids are going back to school. Maybe we should try doing something fun ourselves.
So going to West on Beaver and West on Bijou, those streets you're asking to be closed, is that part of the race as well?
Correct.
Okay.
And I miss the times. I see the race starts at 10:00 and lasts two hours, so 10:00 to noon. What about the rest of the event? Does it start early and go to midnight, or what are the plans?
Um, no. Actually, we're doing setup, starting at 8:00, and we'll do registration for the car show or for the poker run from 9:30 to 10:30. The poker run will start from 11:00 to 12:30, and that's when we'll start the live music.
Okay. And then it ends, what time do you finish up in the day?
We're looking at about dusk.
Okay.
And then we would clean up and such.
Okay. Thank you.
Jeff, can you remind me where we're at with...and this could be, I just need to do five more minutes of research before tonight, where we're at with public consumption of alcohol. But because of the beer garden, it doesn't apply, right? Since they won't be walking in public areas with an open beverage?
They'll have to stay in a contained area, same as Bob Stock.
Got it. So I know we like started having the conversation with Bob Stock, and then we didn't need to finish the...
Yeah, but they still had to contain a beer garden area, and that was the reason for the security. They can't leave, they can't go out of beverages.
Got it.
Ellie, that's really a different issue, and that's the next agenda item. That depends on how the council takes action on this one.
Got it.
The beer garden, okay.
Thanks, John.
I think we need some questions on the beer garden side of things right now, because we're kind of in a time crunch. I mean, this is kind of short notice to post it, to do it. I know we still have time, and you're still working on the liquor license. You have not procured that yet. Is that correct?
Through the city?
They've applied for it, and to, I guess, jump ahead to the next agenda item, the only way we could make it work based on the timeframe that we had was to bring this special event itself to the council for approval and bring their application for a special event permit, beer license, tonight, and ask the council if you would be inclined to allow that on public property, which is normally these special event permits. My office can approve those administratively when they're like on the Elks parking lot or on private property somewhere, but when they're on a public street, which we only started allowing last year, the council has to approve that. So if the council gives me the green light to, okay, you can have it on Beaver Avenue, then we'll put up a sign tomorrow posting that property, posting notice of that application for a beer garden permit, basically, and that'll remain up for 10 days. If there are any protests to it, those would have to be heard at the September 1st City Council meeting. In general, we've not had complaints or protests of these kinds of applications in the past, but we haven't had too many on public streets either, so it's hard to say. So from tomorrow until a week from Friday, that posting will be on, right on the corner of the park, and telling that they're planning to have a beer garden here. If you have any complaints or protests, address them to me, and by noon on Friday, the 28th.
I was also wondering if it would be beneficial to provide proof of my liquor liability insurance as well. I do have it placed, so that's something that we can provide on the beer garden, and that is actually just a way that we could also raise funds for doing additional events in Morgan County, since we are both nonprofits.
Okay. So are one of you United Way and the other is?
United Way, Break the Silence.
You should have wore t-shirts.
I know.
Or different masks.
I was like, oh, nice. Your Honor, I just have two other questions till we try to figure out the next step. So are there any specific conditions you've kind of talked through locally in Morgan County that would, as far as active cases or new case counts, that would cause you to change your plans? Have you thought through kind of what would happen if we had a big outbreak in some major employers, or we had some schools that were closed down because we had a spike in cases? At that point, would you consider postponing your event?
In that circumstance, yes. We also actually have invited all law enforcement to be involved as well. I kind of talked to Jared about setting up tables and bringing in cars or canines, that kind of thing, just to show that we do stand in solidarity for the cause, but also for our city.
And second question is related to if there is, if there are some carriers, positive cases that are asymptomatic that arrive at the event, and there are...is there a way that you could follow back up with people who attended the event, like having an email list or something if there was, it became a super-spreader event?
Right. We do have some surveys that we're planning to hand out, as well as we will have all of the entry forms from the poker run.
Cool.
And we're also posting things that say, please mind our social distancing guidelines and zones that we have marked off. We are also having hand sanitizer stations, extra washing stations, extra porta-potties, so that we can place them in different zones, so that we're not having a line at the porta-potties.
Cool, thanks. Your Honor, those are my last two questions.
The poker run, is that, do you have a route set outside of town, or the typical type of a poker run?
So we are just utilizing some of those local businesses. Again, we have a five-stop. It's going to stay all in Morgan County. We have the five stops already secured. Yeah. Did you want to know where?
So it's not going to be like the run through town?
No, it's just really sure, and it's just something that we decided that we would give a try, adding it to the Break the Silence event, and it's another way to bring the community out and participate.
Evan, so the fees that they're asking for waived are $3,470, Steve. Does it cost anything to shut down Main Street in these areas? Is there additional fees to do that on top of these fees?
Yeah, I mean, there's certainly soft costs to that, right? We'll have to bring crews in and equipment in, barricades and signs and cones and, you know, these types of things, and the guys will have to come in after the event and tear all that down, so certainly those costs exist. You know, as a soft cost, some of this is overtime expense for us to come in and do that. I don't have a number for you, but yeah, there's certainly just the personnel cost to do that.
Okay.
We have the material, it's just a matter of getting the guys in to do it and take it down.
Okay. What about your department, Jared? I know this impact you guys.
Well, it depends on how many people we can have there. I know the application requests to have two different officers for the entire 12 hours. I don't think that's worth doing for the simple reason, this is very similar to the festival, or not festival park, the car show. We've never provided security, other than, I think there'd been a couple times for a specific band for a couple hours or whatever, so we're looking at doing that, plus I know they requested to have officers there as well, as more of a informational booth, pretty common, similar to what we used to do in festival park, those kind of things. So the actual cost is going to be just estimating, if we have somebody there for two different officers, maybe for roughly four to five hours, we're looking at under $500.
To tack on to that, Brian, too, that's one of the challenges we've had with the special event packets, and that's something I've approached since I started here, was on our special event packets, we don't specifically have monetary values for things such as street closures. So that's something that, when I've done these presentations for things like Bob Stock or car show, I mention it, I don't know what the value is of it, because we've never sat down and quantified that, but to bring that to council's attention as well. So, thank you.
So if this is approved, the beer garden is not approved, are you still going with the event?
With such a short time to plan and seek sponsorships, we actually would like to utilize the beer garden to raise funds for the nonprofits in order to do more events for the city.
Okay, that was just a question, if that was a deal breaker?
Yes, it's not a deal breaker. We would still do it, of course.
Mel, you got anything to add to this?
We got to hear from Mel.
Oh, Mel.
Well, we can, you can speak too.
Can you just continue on?
No, you have to come, Mel. I feel that if the council does grant the beer garden...
Do you want to come up here so we can all, everybody can hear you?
Yeah, Mel Bustos, Northeast Colorado Health Department. I do feel if the council does grant the beer garden, that they give them as much space as possible. I know that 175 number, that's a big number, but we still go off square footage, so we need to make sure we give them as much room as possible to get as many people as possible. And I think that's it. I think that's all I got. Like I said, the other parts of the event, we were good with, you know, we got it, broke up into the different zones. I just didn't have a zone for the beer garden.
Amy, is it the same tent, or is it going to be open? The beer garden?
I'm sorry, what was that?
Is it going to be in a tent, or is it going to be open?
At this point, I'm not sure if we have time to locate a tent that large, but it's going to be fenced in.
Okay.
With a six-foot fence. So we have one security officer checking IDs and doing the clicks in, beer on one side, around exit, security on the back door for emergency exit, and then security on the exit door, so they can monitor how many people are going in and coming out appropriately.
You know, I'm not the brightest light bulb here, but I was trying to see how big your beer garden was going to be.
Do we have a square footage on?
Yes, sir. I measured out to be just over 14,000 square feet, if we use all of Beaver Street.
So is plenty, Mel, would be plenty for 175 people, then?
What was the square footage?
Yeah, there have been a couple of different maps presented. The first one showed half of the block, and this latest one shows the entire block and even kind of buttoned out a little bit into State Street.
Okay.
For about 14,000 square feet, we can get about 80 people.
80?
80.
So we can change that?
Yeah.
And allow our security to monitor for 80?
I just, I think this is great, I think, but last thing I want to do is be on 9 News that we were just really dumb and, you know. So we keep our numbers good, I think we're going to be fine.
Right.
We're not any dumber than some of the ones at 10.
Right, right, right. But we just, we got some, you know, there's another big event coming in September, and you know, I just don't want to draw, you know, a lot of attention, and as long as we're doing everything great, then I think we're going to be okay.
I've never had 9 News out in the past.
So 175 people, I thought, holy, that's a lot, you know, so I'm thinking, how big is this? Square footage? So, thanks, Mel.
Okay, so we're looking at 80 people within the beer garden area. Are you, you're still, you're not having vendors, food vendors or that, or are you?
The reason why we're not utilizing the food vendors this year is because we don't want to take away from the downtown businesses. Oh, and we also didn't have time to do the applications for the food vendors. Oh, and we also didn't have time to do the applications for the food vendors, because we're at such short notice. I'm sure that'll be something that we can add once we get a little bit bigger. It's my fourth year doing it, so we're slowly expanding.
Your timeframe goes till 11 o'clock, right?
I, that was to include like tear-down and cleanup of the park.
But the actual event hours are?
So, set up at eight. Poker run registration, 10:30 to 11:30, and live music until about dusk, maybe a little bit later than that, but we should be done by nine o'clock, eight o'clock.
Okay, so your 11 timeframe was just for cleanup and?
Correct, we didn't want to leave the park a mess, so.
I was going to say, because 11 o'clock, that's, can't serve after 10.
I think we would cut the serving when my last band is halfway done, just so we can kind of take care of anybody else that's left in the Beer Garden, and have them filter out.
Does anybody else have any other questions or clarification on this?
None more from me, Your Honor.
I'm good.
None for me.
Sounds good. Clincher, Kevin, you guys want to chime in?
I forgot about this, too.
That's a go-ahead.
Thumbs up and a wave.
Hey, it's good to be here. I would like to say something just with respect to what we're talking about. I can't imagine how difficult this has been for these organizers trying to get this all together with the changing of COVID and everything else, but I'm also very pleased with how the city has responded, because, you know, depression is the most common illness in the United States. And one of the sequelae or fatalities of depression, of course, is suicide. We all hear now specifically about suicide going up because of all the restrictions and everything else that this COVID pandemic has forced upon everybody and everything. So I'd like to commend all the organizers and everything, and also city staff, because it appears to me that city staff has been working with them diligently to try and help get this set up. And I personally was unaware of the previous three versions of this Break the Silence, so I'm just tickled thinking that they're making it more center stage and everything, so that more people are aware of it, and hopefully we can help break the silence, so that there, people aren't afraid to talk about their depression and everything, because I've always told people that it's, suicide is a permanent solution to a temporary problem.
Exactly. Thank you so much. That is our goal, and if we can just save one life by doing our event, we did our job.
Yeah, I agree with Kevin. I hadn't heard of it before either, so I think it is very good, very timely right now.
Thank you.
You know, help us get out a little bit, because we've been, we haven't really done much of anything, which is, is good, but I think it's time to step out and see how our community responds to it, and.
Thank you so much.
Jeff, you see any legal issues? No? Guess you're done at the moment, unless Tyler wants to say something.
Good, sir.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
So, Your Honor, for this, we've got to take action, formal action on a couple of things. First, the in-kind fee waivers and stuff for this event, which in essence is approving them holding the event. And then separately, I would need some direction formally from you to go ahead and do the remaining due diligence on the Beer Garden permit and post that property and get all that squared away in time to make it happen. So those are the two action items that we've got.
Right, the Beer Garden is our next item?
Right.
Right. So what we will be going on right now, so that everybody's clear, is just authorizing the waiver of fees and approval of the event. Next item we will address is going to be the Beer Garden portion. So it's two separate items, we're not, this is not a carte blanche approval on this, so.
Right.
Mayor and Jeff, would it be appropriate when we make the authorization that pending final approval of the Beer Garden from the Health Department? Because they haven't approved that plan yet, since they learned the new number tonight, or?
It'll be two separate items, because if we don't do the Beer Garden, or the Beer Garden isn't approved, they're still going through with this, so they'll need this approval, and then we'll go through and do the approval of the Beer Garden as a separate item.
Got it, okay.
So there'll just be two.
That makes sense.
Okay. There is no other questions. I would entertain a resolution for approval or denial of the waiver of in-kind services.
Your Honor, I offer a resolution on the request for in-kind services and fee waivers for the Break the Silence, United Way, United We Race event.
Second.
I have a resolution by Lynn Deal, a second by Doug Sashow, vote by roll call.
Aye.
That resolution carries unanimously.
Thank you, council. You'll be seeing me next council for another special event.
Thanks for your work on this, Steve.
You're not going to stick around for the Beer Garden, Steve? All right.
And, yeah, I kind of outlined the scenario that we're looking at, is doing this sort of in reverse. Normally, we would post the property and come to council, you know, in this 45-day window, but we can make it work if we post that property tomorrow morning and do it till a week from Friday. There is, and I've explained this to Kelly, there is the possibility, if somebody does protest, that the council may be forced to have a public hearing of those protests or complaints, and the rug could get pulled out from under them. And I, you know, I suppose the Health Department conceivably could too, if, for some reason, they don't sign off on it, but.
That answered my question.
Okay, and, so, yeah, basically, you're not, I will approve the special event permit for the Beer Garden administratively, but with your direction that I am able to let them do it on a public street. So that's what you're basically voting on now. It's just that element of it, is allowing them to have it on Beaver.
On public street, okay. And in the event somebody does come in and file a complaint or any sort of opposition to it, then we would be required to have a public hearing prior to final authorization, correct?
Right. And you, so you'd have to, it wouldn't immediately kill the thing, you'd have to hear the complaint and make a decision what was the right way to go, so.
Does anybody have any questions regarding the approval or disapproval of the special event permit for the Beer Garden? Or any questions for legal?
And administratively, it's just for this event, so we're not, it's not a blanket?
It only for this event. It'd be the same as we did for Bob Stock last year.
Thanks.
Any legal issues from you, Mr. Wilson, or that you're aware of? None? There are no questions or that? I would entertain a resolution.
Your Honor, I offer a resolution to authorize a city clerk to grant administrative approval for a special event permit for Beer Garden on public property for the event Break the Silence and United We Race.
Second.
I have a resolution by Allison Howe, and a second by Doug Sashow. I have one question before we vote on this, though. Mel had mentioned the square footage that they had blocked off would allow 80 people. Do we need, does that need to be included in this? Because they've said 175, so before we get into here, is that something we need to address on this as well?
I think it wouldn't hurt to include it in the motion.
I would include it.
Or the resolution, yeah.
I don't know of anything keeping you from doing it, and, like he said.
Your Honor, I offer a resolution. Should the city clerk to grant administrative approval for a special event permit for Beer Garden on public property for the Break the Silence, United We Race event, with the amendment of the change from 175 people in the Beer Garden to 80, pending the Health Department's approval?
Second.
I have a resolution by Allison Howe, and a second by Doug Sashow. Vote by roll call.
That resolution carries unanimously.
Great job putting all that together. That was a lot of things, and plus you passed 100% of all the council questions.
Usually I take six months to build this event, so four weeks is crazy. We got it all together, though.
Good job.
Good luck.
Thank you, guys, so much.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mel.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is presentation on bids for a financial auditing service. Ms. Kenny.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. We did two actual RFPs in order to get an auditor this time. There were three firms that applied first, and none of those were accepted. The second RFP was posted July 22nd, and we got all of our proposals in on time. It helped that we let them do them electronically. The firms that submitted proposals were Perspective Business Solutions from Littleton, Colorado, All About IT from Houston, Texas, and BDO USL LLP out of Greeley, Colorado, which used to be ACM, the firm that we had in the past. The team of us that got together to select the auditor was Steve Glamare, Chris Boston, and myself. The one that we feel best meets our needs is the firm that we have had for the last eight years, who is now owned or merged with the BDO USA LLP. They, they've had a lot of experience in local government. What we found was that Perspective Business Solutions, the first one, was a firm of two CPAs who are just getting started, who first started doing municipal audits in 2019. So we needed somebody that had years of experience. All About IT from Houston had not done any audits in our area, and as you can see on the memo, their price was three times what we've ever paid for an audit. So, or five times, excuse me, five times, five times three is 150. So that one was out. They would have been anyway, because they don't have local experience. So of the three, we felt that ACM was the best, best one for us to go to. Their fee is up a bit from what it was last year, which they always go up some. We would offer them this with the option for renewal for two additional years, but that option is up to us. So if we find that after the first year, we're not seeing what we want, we can definitely make a change and do another RFP next year. So can I answer any questions?
I have a couple.
Okay.
We did the first RFP, and we had three submittals there. What was the reason to not accept any of those and put it off tentatively for however long, and then come back and do another one later that month?
We made a selection from those three, and that selection was made and was intended to be presented. I think a memo was even written as to who that selection was. However, someone we had reached out to for reference, actually, the CFO of the school board called me and had some concerns. They had been having that firm. That was one of the reasons we were having the firm, because they had, but they had had some, some problems, and he recommended that we, that we not use that firm. So we decided to go out again for people. We didn't have like a clear feeling that the second-place one would, would do the job for us the way we wanted. Their focus is not as much auditing, you know, it's, and that would have been Clifton Larson. They do have, they would have probably been okay, but we decided to go out, look at what was out there, and ended up with the same firm that we've had, so.
I have asked about an RFP and going out for an auditor for two years. I've got a song and dance for the last two years on that, and, you know, we've gone twice through this, and it was a new auditor, because in the past, we have always changed. Mike Lee used to be our auditor, we've changed through them. Tim Mayberry with ACM, I don't know if it was ACM when they initially came in, but I know that Tim Mayberry was part of the second part of ACM. But we've typically went out for a new one. It's kind of like getting a second opinion on something. When you've had the same auditor over and over, it's just, it's a routine. And if you look at the numbers on the ones that are in here, the following year, the initial one is a high number, the second year is a lower number, because they spend additional time setting up the audit for their, the way that they do these things. I think that we get in a rut when we maintain the exact same firm over and over, and I think eight years with the same firm, auditing firm, is probably above and beyond where we should go. I think we need to look at new, fresh look at our auditing. I've asked this in the past for, like, as I said, two years. I went through the past city superintendent on it, and I have, it's got pushed down the road until now. So for me personally, I would rather see us go out and get a, a firm that we is new to our auditing source, just because it's a fresh set of eyes on the books and the finances.
Yeah, I share your concern, and I had hoped that we would have gotten more. We can do another RFP, or what we could do is, I think it's legal, maybe to specifically look at firms, you know, and say, hey, would you be interested in doing our audit? And I don't know that the, is, is an RFP required before you select someone? If someone hasn't applied, can you go to them and say, hey, would you be interested? You can do that. So I guess my recommendation would be that we get, that way, get someone else. If you're concerned and you want a new auditor, I'm totally fine with it.
I'm speaking for myself.
Well, I understand.
And I haven't discussed this with any other, other council. I've decided to bring it here where we can all.
Sure, sure. No, and I share your concern. I think it's a good idea when you have someone auditing you for it to change, and we had hoped that that would be what worked out.
So on the initial one, when you had one of them that you had selected, and the school district CFO recommended against it, against that firm, what was the other? If I recall seeing the numbers on that, it was similar, one of them was. If I recall seeing the numbers on that, it was similar, one of them was kind of similar to All About IT, one was extremely.
Yeah, the Atlas was, yeah. It wasn't the pricing that was out of the ballpark, but they had really never done this sort of work, you know, I mean, to any extent, so. Clifton Larson was, is a, I mean, it would be, I would think it would probably be an acceptable choice if we wanted to go with them. Our main reason we chose Hinkle was because we wanted the idea of having a smaller firm, because ACM was a large firm, and there were, sometimes we wouldn't have the same set of auditors each year, and we thought, well, with a small one, we would. But from the indications that were made by Mike, that would have been a mistake to go with them, and it was clearly something we wanted to drop. You know, we could look at further at Clifton Larson. I, I don't think there was anything unacceptable, but.
Yeah.
Whatever we do, we're gonna have, we'll, we'll need to come back and get okay. And, you know, quite frankly, there's plenty of time. We started on this project early enough that there is time to look at it thoroughly and make the decision that everyone thinks is the right one.
And Jeanne, how long have we been using ACM or, I guess, B now BDO? How, how long have we had them?
We used them for eight years.
Eight, okay.
We used Mayberry for a lot longer than that.
Yeah.
Prior, and Mayberry honestly is not connected with ACM. We, we chose ACM from an RFP, just like we're looking at now. But Mayberry has his own firm, Mayberry Holsher, but he was.
He was with.
He went off on his own from a, from a group and, and went completely on his own, and, I mean, I was only here for one audit with him, so I, you know, I can't really speak to how that all went, but I know that the, I was just looking at audits today because I'm moving things around in my office, and I, he, he did quite a few of them for us, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, Mayor, perhaps we could, we could take this back and look at maybe reaching out specifically to some companies and having a conversation with them more specifically about providing this service for us and maybe table this item tonight.
There was a firm that Mike Lee suggested that he is going to, and I did request on their website that they apply, and they didn't, but maybe they didn't even see it, you know, so maybe a phone call to him, you know, because that might be, you know, I don't know. But they do municipal audits. What, what Mike said to me is that it's just getting really hard because there's not that many firms that are like local-sized firms that do municipal audits. They're almost always done by really large firms, so, you know, we might end up with the Clifton.
And we have a large budget.
Yeah.
So I.
Yeah, I agree with liking to have some new eyes look at things.
Yeah, I, I mean, I would prefer that, actually.
So I mean, that's just my thoughts. Clint, anybody else got any thoughts on this, or Kevin?
I agree with the mayor. I think just a second opinion would be, make sure we're all up to speed on things. If we are, we are, great for us, then. So I agree with him.
Yeah, I don't have any concerns with that.
Yeah.
So Jeanne, if we table this tonight, it's not gonna harm your department in any way if we push out the selection more? Okay.
They're done with their audit for this year.
Yeah, we've got until next year.
We're kind of on a little break. Well, actually, you know, we want to have it, we still want to have this settled. In like a month, I think we want to have this settled, because they, they come, some firms come like in October for an interim. Our firm was coming in January, which worked nicely because they could do more of the year, and when they came for the final audit, it was shorter, you know, for, for ACM. But no, I think we developed a good relationship with them. I had concerns that I've expressed over and over again about meeting deadlines, and, you know, I'm, my heart is not broken. Definitely.
Yeah, I think I can work with Jeanne, and we can come up with a good plan and bring this back to you in the next couple of meetings, probably.
Well, I mean, do we have, as far as our procurement policy, do we have to go out and do another RFP, or can we approach firms to, I mean, we've done it twice. Do we have to go back out for a third, or can, will they approach firms that have some familiarity or that?
Yeah, I think what I would suggest is that we, we put it out, but we could reach out specifically to some companies and really invite them to propose on the, on the audit. You know, there's nothing that prevents us from doing that, and I think we've got some names and, and folks we could reach out to specifically and, and try to get them to consider the, the audit.
We kind of want the answers to the questions we have in our RFP.
Yep.
So whether we do it formally.
I guess it would be like screening, you, who would fit what we have for an RFP, so.
Yeah, yeah.
But we, we could put a tight timeframe on that and get that turned around fairly quickly, I think, so.
And then prime the pump by, by talking to some particular firms.
Correct.
Yeah.
Yep, that would be the way to handle our procurement policy and get some names in here, I think.
And I did get some names. I didn't use them because we had already sent out the thing from our, our placement guy, Nick, or Nate, Nate Echoff. He did give me some names, but they sounded like they were one-people firms, and I was like, you know, I think it's gonna take more than one.
Yeah.
The CML Finance Directors and Managers list serves are a good source of information for that stuff.
Okay, yeah. We've never had to really go seeking them, but maybe it has gotten to the point where it is, like Mike Lee says, there's just not that many that bid on it. And, you know, it's a lot of work to do a bid.
Yeah.
And a lot of times they think, oh, you're just gonna pick your same auditor, which obviously the first time we didn't, but, um, yeah, so.
Yeah, I think we can work together.
And our auditor, just to say, on that first bid, I told them that it was coming out on Friday, they had about a week and a half to do it, and they didn't do it. So they didn't apply on the first one, because they, they missed it, you know, so.
Okay.
Well, that's, I think that's a problem right there, yeah.
Yeah.
It is a front legwork.
I, I bothered to tell them that it's there, and then somehow they missed it, you know, and somehow our audit was three weeks late. I'm not gonna start with that.
Thanks, Jeanne.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So, Your Honor, if you don't mind, if we could just take action on this and say something like a resolution to not accept any of these bids and proceed to a new RFP, rather than, if we table it, then it's on the table, and.
Right.
And these companies that are kind of hanging on this.
Hanging.
RFP.
Fair enough.
Are waiting for an hour come.
Okay.
That's perfect.
Makes sense. I would entertain a resolution to accept or deny the financial auditing services.
Your Honor, I offer a resolution to deny this, the financial auditing service that was presented to us, the BDO USA LLP, and, and do a search for another auditing firm.
Second.
I have a resolution by Lynn Deal, a second by Allison Howe. Vote by roll call.
That resolution carries unanimously.
The one thing I did like about that firm was the BDO, because I have to remember my license plate, and it's BDO, so those who know me know it's BDO. Now, you always hear that ad on TV.
That's where I've heard that.
Have to lighten it up a little bit.
Next is a presentation on bids for a three-yard loader for the street department. JW. Did you wear your old one out?
I did. Need a new toy. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm here to present a new front-end, the purchase of our new front-end loader. The Streets has budgeted out of the capital fund $275,000 for the purchase of this loader. It will replace our existing IT 28F CAT loader, which is about 27 years old. This is a very vital piece of equipment, something we use every day, all the time, so. Everything from street rebuilds to snow removal, loading trucks, street patching, everything we pretty much do. So an advertisement was put on the city website on March 4th, and with a bid closing date of March 30th, about the time COVID hit in, so there were some confusions on how to accept bids, so we extended that bid to April 9th to give everybody an opportunity to get their bids in. We got three bids for the loader, two of them from Power Equipment and one from Wagner Equipment. One of them, the L70 Volvo from Power Equipment, it's a little bit smaller loader than what we were looking for, than what we bid for. The L90 was closer to what we were looking for. It still didn't have horsepower specs that we were looking at, but it did meet our torque specifications. Wagner CAT met everything that we were looking for. We did have a list of options that we put out on the bid form. Can we take the time to go through each one, or entertain questions about them?
I guess if you want to bounce real quick through them, that's.
Okay.
They don't, they's.
We had.
Self-explanatory, but.
Yeah, pretty much. We had our initial bids, and then our, the 70 came in at 156,410. The 90 come in at 174,90, and the CAT 98M came in at 182,445,43. And we do have trade-in values for our IT 28. Power Equipment was gonna give us 18,000. Wagner Equipment's gonna give us 12,590. Then with the options that we spec'd, an extra heavy counterweight on the back end, that's to counterweight for the weight of our loader, or, excuse me, our, our snowblower. Thing weighs about 11,000 pounds, so we need a little extra weight in the back end for that. One thing we were looking at is getting this multipurpose fusion bucket. It's like a clamshell bucket. It can be used to, if you will, it has a dozer end on, on the end of it, and, and the bucket will actually open up, so it's got different ways of dumping your materials into the trucks. You can doze with it, you can actually lift over and pick up rocks and stuff with it. It's, it's a pretty, pretty versatile piece of equipment that can be tagged to the front of that. With that, we would have to have the third or fourth-out functions, which is listed on there as our options and stuff as well. So with our options in there, the 70 come in at 157,505. The 90 come in at 175,489, and the CAT come in at 191,371. And then we give them an option in our bid form to give us any of their suggestions of what they would like, you know, what they think we would like to see on our loaders. So Volvo gave theirs of their sample port, oil sampling ports, block heater, and reversible fan, so we added them in for those. And then CAT, they, and these aren't across the board, because it's just what they decided to put on there, so. But CAT can give us an environmental medium, which is the reversible fan, and a cyclone cleaner, which keeps the air filters and stuff clean for, you know, free of dust and debris, that helps the engines run a lot cleaner. An object detection radar in the rear, which I didn't think of, but we get rear cameras and stuff put in there, but this will actually give you an alert if something's behind you. So that's a pretty neat option. And then the right-hand windshield access for the steps. That'll allow us to walk around the machine and clean the windows and stuff, so we can see it a lot, a lot easier. So our final, with all them added into it, the 70 was 158,747. The Power Motive 190 was 176,731, and the CAT was 195,796,47. So with the options that we spec'd, we're looking at about a $15,000, $16,000 difference. We are recommending that we would go with the CAT. Street Department's always kept CAT equipment for a number of years. It's always been very dependable, we've hadn't had any issues, and it always seems to do the job that we expect it to do. Staying with the CAT will help us with our inventories, so we're not having to carry different products for different manufacturers. A lot of that would be with the diagnostics, so if something goes wrong with it, we have to buy a whole new different diagnostic equipment, do different things, or different vendors. So, and with the CAT, we always do the CAT care, which is Caterpillar gives us their suggestions of what we need to do according to our oil samples, transmission samples, differential, and they always send us the filter packages and everything that we need to do, service at particular points in time. And it's all free of charge, they just, just work with us on that. So, so our staff is requesting council approval to accept the bid for the 938M CAT loader from Wagner Equipment for 169,855.43 with the trade-in included, and to approve the purchase of the options and the additional options. And also to include in, in this amount would be for the radio miscellaneous equipments like warning lights and, and stuff like that. So we're looking to have a bid for, or receive no more than $200,000. This is still keeping it way under our budgeted amount of 275,000.
Do you do a lot of the oil changes and that in-house?
Yes.
Does Bob do those?
Mm-hmm, yep, he takes care of all that stuff.
Do you stock filters, oil, and that for this?
Yes.
Which is gonna be, I mean, we're gonna be able to write in from that machine for the trade-in to this one.
Yep.
Pretty much.
Right, yep.
And we got 27 years out of the other one with.
We did.
Pretty reliable.
Mm-hmm, yes, it is.
Service.
Yep. We got that one, I think, about a year and a half before I started.
Wow.
Yeah.
Too bad we didn't have a parade, you could put it in the parade.
It's been in it a couple times.
Okay. Does anybody else have any questions for Mr. Willis?
None for me.
No.
Well, I would entertain a resolution. Kevin or Clint, do you have any questions? No?
Your Honor, I offer a resolution to accept the bid from Wagner Equipment for the 938M CAT wheel loader with all traded, with all additional options and features not to exceed $200,000.
Second. I have a resolution by Allison Howe, a second by Doug Sashow. Vote by roll call.
That resolution carries unanimously.
Just want to say that and thank all your guys that were out working today in 100-degree weather.
Oh, yes.
And it's been a hot summer. I think about that all the time.
Guys, yeah, they're working with that crack seal that's coming out, 350, 400 degrees, and we're keeping them well hydrated and giving them a lot of breaks, but.
Tell them thank you.
They're trudging along, trying to get ahead of our chip seal programs and stuff, which is gonna happen next month.
Been hot, so tell them thanks.
Okay, I sure will.
We'll tip the hat to Bob, he does a good job if we got 27 years out of that.
Yeah.
He's doing a good job maintaining our equipment.
Really well.
Yes, he does.
Bob was my little neighbor boy, I remember when he was five years old.
For maintaining your equipment the way you do.
Yeah, he's a good guy.
Very much, yep. I know it's.
Great job.
It's important, and we appreciate getting it.
Thanks, Kevin.
Thank you very much.
Next is a presentation on bids for upgrades to the audiovisual broadcast system for the council chambers. Nelson.
In the closet.
The man behind the curtain.
That's right. Good evening, Your Honor, members of council. We went out for bid to upgrade our system for the audiovisual, or to upgrade the audiovisual system, all the cameras, microphones, things like that, make it a little bit more interactive. Also, if, I mean, you know, if, if there's a, if there's a vaccine, we don't know, it might work, it might not, so we need to plan for the long term. We want to make sure that we keep our citizens safe and make it so they're able to participate in democracy. That's, I, I. That's, I, we received three bids back. The bids were open for two weeks. I'm sorry, I'm running on E right now. I was up until 2:30 in the morning last night. We had a server crash, so my brains...
We'll follow you. Don't worry. Don't worry.
Fine.
Sorry. So, yeah. Does anyone have any questions or...
No, but I'll make a comment.
Sure.
The funding for this is going to be utilized through the CARES funds that we have, so this is not a city budgeted item.
Yes, we would like to use the CARES Act funding to...
That's great.
And we recommend, we would like to go with Kenan Entertainment of Fort Morgan, Colorado. They're local, so if they mess up...
That's great.
Can call Linton to turn their power off.
I like that.
Nelson, were they bidding the same thing? Because that one came, Kenan came in at 55 and the closest one is 100, then 129 after that.
Yeah. I, that was, the amount of difference between all of them was very interesting. They had pictures. They were able to ask questions. I don't know, I'm pretty sure I didn't leave anything out. I mean, I think I had, what, John, 20 pictures, 20, 30 pictures? It was a lot of pictures of everything to make sure that people could get a firm grasp on everything. And then floor plans, a very lengthy description of the system that we currently have. So I don't know. Maybe there were some things that they missed. I did tend to overload with information, so maybe that was part of it. It was just got lost in the noise. I don't know. But they looked very similar. Carlos and I went through them and, you know, they were very similar. I'm not entirely sure why there was such a huge difference between all three of them.
And Nelson, you had somebody come and actually look at the room. Was that Kenan?
Yes.
Yeah, so that may have had some to play into that. They actually came and actually looked, you know, at our system that we currently have and the room back there and...
I didn't offer. He had asked.
I was just curious.
Sure, sure.
Because even with all the upgrades, they were still under that 100,000 of excitement.
Yeah.
That's good.
Even if they missed a small part, they're still...
No, that's all.
Quite a bit of room. Yeah, I know what's at there.
That's even with the optional extras that Kenan provided, which is including replacing the screens here, which we're going to try to keep Ben's beautiful work, his woodworking. We're going to try to keep that.
Yeah, that's beautiful.
So we'll try to butt the screens up against that, so we at least get to keep, because, I mean, it's fantastic work, so...
Did a good job.
Yeah. Heavy, very heavy though.
I'm really, really excited about this because I know a lot of citizens can participate in a different way, with or without COVID, so I think it's the right direction no matter what. So I'm really, like, beyond thrilled that we're moving this direction.
I mean, we're going to have some bugs to clean out or to work out, you know, how to control things without stepping on people's First Amendment rights and things like that, so... But we'll get it all sorted out, get it all going. We don't, we don't want, you know, internet people to get on there and start wreaking havoc like they did to Chipotle.
I think it's great. I've really appreciated it. When someone can't come to one of our board meetings, they can attend when it's important, so it's just a lot more accessible to meetings and for the public, so I think it's just great.
Well, and HD too. I mean, if you look at the standard definition on our screen, it looks terrible. Also closed captioning, so those who are, you know, are hearing impaired can actually read the screen and read what you guys are saying, which, you know, will help us become even more ADA compliant, better listening devices, more reliable listening devices for ADA compliance. Be a lot of benefits for this.
Okay. Any other questions for Nelson? Saying none, I would entertain a resolution.
Your Honor, I offer a resolution on the upgrades to the audiovisual broadcast system for the City of Fort Morgan to use Kenan Entertainment and to use the funds from the COVID, what is that called?
CARES Act.
The COVID CARES Act, which is great.
Second.
I have a resolution by Lynn Deal, a second by Allison Howe. Vote by roll call.
That resolution carries unanimously.
Thanks, guys. Really appreciate it.
Thanks, Nelson.
Can't wait. Nelson, thanks.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is a public hearing to consider an application for a preliminary plat for the major subdivision, create a total of 38 lots from two existing lots for individual sales and development, including rights of way and establishment of easements, where public infrastructure is proposed and/or required to be constructed in association with the subdivision as throughout major subdivision process. This is a public hearing. Keep your compliments to the issues before council. Each speaker is asked to limit their comment time to three minutes unless the speaker represents a group of citizens, in which event additional time may be allocated. Please respect these limitations as I reserve the right to limit public comment that is inappropriate under these guidelines or otherwise improper. I also reserve the right to limit testimony and questioning that is repetitive, cumulative, argumentative, and not pertinent to the issues and set a time limit on the duration of testimony by determining to be necessary in light of the number of people who have signed up to testify. First is the legal notice. Mr. Brennan, was this properly noticed?
Yes, Your Honor, a legal notice of this public hearing appeared in the Fort Morgan Times on July 29.
Application. Mr. Nation.
Yeah, good evening again. So what you have in front of you is a, it's kind of, came out of a lot of discussions with the Economic Development Office and a lot of us on staff about how to kind of best utilize part of the ground that's over in the Center Point Plaza development. And as we continue to see that grow, we continue to see interest in, you know, potential sales and different type of businesses that might be interested in looking at it. And one of the things we kind of discovered earlier this year and even coming out of last year was that we really need to have a part of that subdivision over there that has a kind of a preset aside area that has some smaller acreages that we can look at selling off in half-acre chunks or acre chunks and like that. Because everything that we've been working with up till then had been larger parcels and we were trying to kind of custom fit, you know, as a business would come in. And so Sarah felt it was kind of important that we go ahead and look at doing something that would kind of give us a designated commercial area that we'd have some lots in. But we also wanted to be cognizant of the cost that the city would, you know, have to bear on putting in infrastructure and making it, you know, shovel-ready for people. And so, so we started through this process. We took a sketch plan to the Planning Commission a couple of months ago and brought this idea to them and it was received favorably. So we went ahead and moved forward with that. So what you see in front of you tonight is the next step in that whole final plat process that we've brought to you before. We've had these discussions. We just went through the same process with the Center Point Square project. And so this parcel is what we're referring to as the Point Village Commercial Park. When you stand in that intersection there at Beaver and Saunders, it's the northeast section of that area. It's due north of the Field House. It's east of the Zoe Loomis Eye Care Clinic that's finally broke down over there. And so what we're, what we're proposing to do is to change that area into a platted area that has 38 lots of approximately a half acre in size. We provided you with a survey map of what that looks like. It's in your packet. We utilized our, our local talent to do the engineering work on that and I want to give Derek Mills a big hand on his efforts. He's the one that has supplied all of the engineering documents and everything that go into the subdivision work that we have and why we can now move to this point in the approval process. So we now have a set of plans that has the stormwater drainage, you know, infrastructure figured into it, sanitary sewer, water, and then the street design. So we have something that we can now look at. And so, so that's kind of a history of what you have in front of you. And so it's at that preliminary plat-type process. There is a whole long list of submittal requirements that Derek has gone through and made sure that we have in the plans, myself. And Steve also has gone through these plans a couple of times to make sure that everything's in there. We haven't found that we've left anything out at this point in those submittals, so we're bringing it to you tonight. We feel that it meets all the zoning district standards and it meets all the subdivision standards at this point. So we're coming up to bring it in front of council. It did just go in front of the Planning Commission on August the 10th. It was, the Planning Commission requested that it move forward with their approval to council. We had one member of the public that showed up to the Planning Commission and got up and started asking questions. And we found out that they were just curious if they were being annexed into the city by this process. And so we explained to her that that wasn't the case and she was like, "Oh, okay," and sat down, so... So we did have one public speak, but not to anything that had to do with the hearing itself. So we have done the notifications that we've needed to. Brenda has shown all that in the packet, the area that we submit cards to. The signage has been put up. And so at this point, I think we're looking to have this move forward with approval of council on case 20009 SD, Point Village Commercial Park Preliminary Plat for a major subdivision to divide the parcel into 38 lots, creating rights of way and various easements as was recommended by the Planning Commission. And with that, I would be happy to answer any questions.
Does anybody have any questions for Brent on this?
I have a question. What if someone wanted to buy, like, three lots? If they had, they could buy three if their place was a little bigger, because that's a lot.
Yeah, and that's exactly why we've gone with the half-acre ones. We have a nice administrative process that if they want to buy three and put one business on that, we can, we can do that subdivision internally. It doesn't have to go out to anybody. It can be done at my office level and then...
Would they have to buy three water taps?
No, the water tap would just be sold if it's one business being located on the acre and a half. It would just be one water tap.
Okay.
Yeah. Yep.
If this goes forward, are we going to start construction on these two streets?
We do not have money budgeted towards that. We've started that conversation internally, and that's the next major thing. We do have a way that we can basically create an initial phase of that that would allow us to basically move forward with potentially selling lots along Beaver and then along Saunders that wouldn't need any additional infrastructure built out. And so we would probably look at doing that and then moving forward with those type of sales. And then as we budget the money for the rest of the construction, we'll get that then put in on a second phase, so...
How does it become the name of the streets?
The...
Badger and Tyler, I believe.
So the, I'm trying to think which one.
I think Badger goes...
Yeah, Badger and Tyler have both now been nixed off of that. That was Derek's two suggestions and... Not that, not that we didn't appreciate Derek's two suggestions. We have since then changed those to, Sarah had requested that they be changed to Hermosa and...
Batista?
Ballatista. It's, the final plat has Ballatista, Hermosa, and then it's an extension of Bijou. That one's an extension of our current street, and so we would have to leave that one labeled, so...
Yeah.
As a developer, I mean, that's, you guys have the final say on the street names, so if it's something that you would like to see different, we would definitely take that under advisement, but at this point...
It came before planning and zoning on the middle school. They tried to name that. Is it Education Street or what?
Education.
One time they brought up Powers.
Yeah.
Councilman, if we can do that.
Yeah.
Spencer Way to... Well, I mean, Sue Spencer and Bill Spencer were a big part of this community. I think one of those streets would be a nice dedication for that family.
Agree too.
I'm just throwing that one out there, so...
And certainly, street names aren't final until the final plat, and then even that can be changed. So we certainly have time to adjust those if you would like. We'd be happy to consider that.
Yeah, something that's in keeping with Fort Morgan.
Yeah.
Okay. I like both those suggestions.
Yeah.
Just not Dead End Street.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that would be a nice tribute of sorts to Mrs. Spencer. She was an integral part of this board and, and the community throughout, so yeah. I did have a good idea. Anybody else have any?
Nope.
None for me.
Brent, you probably remember this. That's where who, those streets over there, Vicky, Carol, those were all the developer, those were all his daughters.
Yes, those were all the daughters.
Who was that?
Um, yeah.
Graff, yeah. Yeah, David Graff.
Okay. Comments by the applicant. I guess we've had them already.
Yeah, I don't think I'd have much more to say on the matter. You have the application in front of you, so...
Public comment? No. There's no one from the, wishes to speak from the public. I would ask the city clerk if you received any oral or written comments prior to this hearing.
Not through my office, Your Honor.
Next, we'll council discussion. Is there any comments or discussion council wishes to indulge in?
None for me.
Nice work. I love maps like that.
So, okay. Saying no further discussion, I would entertain a motion to close this public hearing.
So moved?
Take it.
I have a motion to close by Allison Howe, a second by Doug Sashow. All in favor?
Aye.
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 All opposed? Same sign? Motion carries. Counsel action. Mr. Wilson.
Mayor and council, you've heard the presentation by the applicant. Appropriate action is by resolution on an application for a preliminary plat for a major subdivision.
With that, I would entertain a resolution for approval or denial.
Your Honor, I offer a resolution to approve case 20-009 SD for the Point Village Commercial Park Preliminary Plat for a major subdivision as is recommended by the Planning Commission.
Second.
Second.
Do we need to include this street or that just we can...
No, we'll just deal with that.
Okay. I have a resolution by Allison Howe, a second by Lynn Deal. Vote by roll call.
That resolution carries unanimously.
Next is a presentation, my first reading of an ordinance adopting the 2015 International Residential Code by reference and request to schedule a public hearing on an ordinance for September 1st, 2020. Mr. Kirkland.
Okay. Mayor and council, as you can tell, it's item F of our codes as we amended them. We brought this one back because in '09, we didn't have this option in the '09 International Residential Code. Now we, in the 2015, we do. It gives them a choice. But we have to amend this section in order for them to get a choice. So basically, the choice is, as referred to in the exception where we're going to add the last sentence, that they would allow them to go back to townhomes in the IRC. And item number two says if you don't have a sprinkler system, then you build a two-hour fire raid wall from foundation to the underside of the deck, and it has to be independent of any structural elements of either unit. So if one unit collapses, then it can't pull that two-hour wall down with it. Or you build two one-hour independently separate walls that sit side by side from basically two houses sitting side by side and you finish each side and you, and you have a gap. So they have a choice of even that. So this would allow a townhome concept, which by definition is a single-family dwelling that is from... which by definition is a single-family dwelling that is from foundation to roof and up to three or more. And it can't be stacked. So you can't stack them on top of each other. They have to be a row house-type concept. You live in every story that you have up to three stories, that nobody else lives above you or below you, just on the side.
It's all one residence.
Yeah, and single-family dwellings. And then it also has to be something that has two sides that are exposed to a street or a yard, and it can't be an enclosed courtyard. So if, allows the ability, if you need to get away from the building for a fire or emergency protection, you're not trapped inside of a courtyard where you can't get out. So it's basically like what we have on 8th Avenue off of Sherman Street, right there by Green Acres. And then we have a whole bunch over there in Cherry, and they have, they circle around the, each unit side by side by side by side. And then, and obviously, then to have the, set the public hearing for September 1st.
Okay, so this would keep them from having to sprinkle the...
Correct. We've, we amended out the requirements for single-family and duplexes already. So this now, since the 2015 code is, has an option that, that I found that if we don't amend this, we can't use. So this would not require us to do anything else with the building codes. We would now have that exception item in R302, item number two, that they can design to. So...
So in that R303.1, so if they have, if they remodel, then they don't have to have a sprinkler system?
Correct.
Are they going to have to come back and put in the two-hour fire-rated wall?
No, no, because the exception, you don't have to do anything, because that's why we put or.
Okay. But there's, underneath there, it says add R2-hour fire-rated.
Or a two-hour fire wall to be built for that section. So the exception says you don't have to do a sprinkler system for everything, or if you build this two-hour rated wall. So if you've already met the requirements as a, it's existing townhome, you're out of, you've already met one requirement. So you don't have to do, you don't have to do them all. You just have to do, meet one of the sections.
Okay.
So or means the new ones that are being proposed, or anybody else that wants to build a townhome-type design, now they have the option. You can, to be exempted out of the sprinkler requirement of R13, is that if you are not already existing, then you can't use that one. Or if you build the two-hour, two-hour rated wall, then now you go back to the item of the code, which is in the codebook right here. And I didn't have, I didn't know what else, but it gives me that item down there that everybody can now go back to that item. And it specifically tells you how and what you need to do. And then at the bottom, you'll see that there's two design concepts that they can go to. So this just gives them the ability. Now we're adding one more exception, I line out him to the exception where it will now take you out of sprinkling a townhome. And we didn't want to take it completely out because somebody might want to sprinkle it, then they wouldn't have to build a two-hour rated wall. So if you sprinkle, you build a one-hour rated wall. If you don't sprinkle, then you build a two-hour rated wall.
So was this a law that came, that provision?
When the, a few years back, the residential building codes came out with requirements for sprinkler systems for single-family duplexes and townhomes. And so everybody got excited about the single-family and the duplexes, but didn't seem to care too much about townhomes. So with the, along with the county, we only exempted the single-family and the duplexes out of requiring them to be sprinkled. And now that a lot of other jurisdictions have exempted it out, the IRC come back and says, "Okay, wait a minute. You still need to protect these individual families." And now you're looping them in, and you have more families that are closer together. We need to do some sort of fire-rated construction to still make them safe.
So where does this, where did they make those decisions? I have no clue.
They, they have an international board, which all, a lot of, all states have the ability to go to, and Colorado's a very active group in this chapter, and they meet all over every year and go through these code cycles, and they, they, every code change every three years. It's a hard work of all these different people making these code changes.
And then that is passed down to you, so you have to comply?
And we adopt codes as individual municipalities and entities, then we can amend what we don't like out of them.
Okay.
And that gives us guidelines, and that's how we get our ISO ratings, by being to the most current codes. And it gives us to be able to get our ISO rating. And that's how we got to go back down to ISO 4 when we went to these newer codes.
Okay, interesting.
So it's a Colorado chapter every year. In March, I go to training, and, and that's where we start learning all the new fun things that, new codes. And just got done doing it with the electrical code last Friday.
Wow.
There's not going to be a lot of people happy with some of those changes, but that's state-driven, so we don't have no options.
You can do it before we pass it, right?
Yeah, so, well, you'll see me in May, because plumbing code and electrical codes, we have a year to get them passed. So next May, we'll start to process, working on...
So you can't, nobody can grandfather in?
Uh, not really. But anyway, this, this gives developers an option so that they, especially manufactured homes, it's very hard for a home being built in a different state to put sprinkler systems in when they don't know what they're selling in another state's rules are. So a lot of manufactured entities are not keen on trying to design something that may not fit the state that they're going to sell it to. So it can be done, but from the people I talk to, it's a little more pricey because they have to make sure it meets that state's requirements or that local entity's requirements.
Okay.
I, I have grandmother in. I forget to do it.
Any other questions?
None for me.
Did a good job explaining.
Yeah.
Thanks. With that, I'd entertain a resolution.
Your Honor, I have a resolution on the first reading for the ordinance to adopt the 2015 International Residential Code and request to schedule a public hearing for this ordinance on September 1st.
Second.
I have a resolution by Allison Howe, a second by Brian Erdy Alice. Vote by roll call.
That resolution carries unanimously.
All right.
Okay. Budget calendar for general fund departments. Mr. Blameyer.
Yeah, all right, Your, Your Honor, thank you. We start into the general fund tonight, and so there's several different budgets we'll be looking at. So the first one is the mayor and council budget. We've just zeroed everything out here. I don't see any reason to have any, oh, wait, am I looking at the wrong one? I'm sorry.
I did not understand that one.
No, really, not a lot of changes here. You guys, we've kept the education and training. Hopefully, things will open back up. As you know, most of that is used for the CML-type outreach meetings and the CML Annual Conference. Council meeting expense is the same, dues and subscriptions is the same. And then we've included the contribution to the County Express in here as well. So no real changes in this budget.
Oh, I see salary and wages transferred. Why are we...
Yeah, I mean, we've got to make sure we get you out of there. No, I'm not sure what that salary and wages transferred for 2019 was, but it's been zero every other...
Out to a lot, so we're fine.
Yeah. Any questions on that one? Pretty simple one.
That was pretty straightforward.
All right. The next one is the city manager's budget. Brent and Genie had put this one together, and I did have an opportunity to review that, and I think it's pretty much in line with what we talked about and would envision for that budget. The only real change is we did remove some of the advertising, and I think a lot of that's moved into economic development and other marketing-type budgets. But outside of that, I don't see any major changes in that budget.
I'm excited to hear about the innovation line, that it's still there.
Still there.
And do you have some plans?
We're going to do great, exciting things. I'm trying to figure out, you know, how we might utilize that money appropriately. But yes, we're going to come up with some great plans for that, so.
Yeah, I'm really excited that that's there.
I have the education and training. Is that going to be sufficient to get you what you're going to be needing for your upcoming venture in that, in your position?
Yeah, thank you. I hope so. I mean, the two or three things I would envision specifically would be the CML Annual Conference, CCCMA Conference, and then potentially the ICMA Annual Conference. I don't know if any of those will open up for next year, but I think that would cover those three. Those would be the big three that I could think of. A lot of the other, like the CML outreach and those types of things would come out of meetings, expenses. So I think there's, I think there's sufficient funds there. But I'll look at those a little deeper and, and see what the costs are for those.
Okay. Well, kind of what I was referring to, if you needed to do some of the city manager accreditation or certifications or whatever training you may need that would be of assistance in, to you in that, in your position.
No, I appreciate that. Let me take another quick stab at that and, and make sure we're good there, but...
You got the fine.
Yep.
What are the innovation funds, since Ellie's so excited about them?
Um, so maybe two or three years ago, well, yeah, do you want to fill that?
Yeah, you know, I asked John just a little bit ago. I said, what, you know, what have we used that money for in the past? And we've certainly had some different ideas and things that we've talked about. But as far as specifically where that money's been spent, I can't answer that question because it's not something that I, I dug into before the meeting tonight. I don't know if there's anybody out there that wants to speak to that.
I can kind of give you a little bit of background on the innovation fund. In the past, we had three people on staff, three city employees who were, went to training as facilitators to try and nurture culture of innovation in the city. We, it ultimately probably wasn't as successful nearly as we would have hoped, but we gave it a good try. And I think there was just resistance from some of the employees and also the realization that we do innovate every day. And trying to force it and, you know, I think we maybe went about it the wrong way. So I think that's what Steve's talking about, that we're going to kind of try and relook at how to approach that.
Okay.
So the reason I'm so excited about it is essentially, well, so John mentioned that innovation's happening every day, but if there's a line item for, kind of like seed money for a specific department to try something new, but in the past, they didn't feel like they had the option because there wasn't, you know, like, this doesn't live in a specific line item yet. So they would request, and they'll, you know, iron it out. But whether it's a new way to do utility billing or a new way for Parks Department to uncover all of the lost discs in the pond or, you know, just, so it just, well, it demonstrates that the organization is willing to move forward to some of these kind of, yeah, just new ideas on how to improve, whether it's, yeah, different programs, processes, things like that. So that's why I'm so excited.
Yeah.
Because I love new ideas, and this way, if it's kind of a flop, then it's a flop that was a $1,000 flop instead of $10,000 flop. So...
Yeah, good questions on that budget. Are there any others that I might be able to answer on the city manager budget?
Where does the youth commission fall? I thought maybe it used to be under council and mayor?
It's in, in the community services.
Yeah, in Ty's budget.
Okay, thanks.
Obviously, it's kind of gone to sleep with everything else to do with the school district for the last six months or so. But, yeah, it's still, still breathing.
It is. And, and I've talked to Ty about that, and he has some ideas about that as well. So he's working on some plans for that.
Okay, perfect. Thanks. That's all I've got, questions for this budget.
Okay. Finance, Chris?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. It's good to see you all again.
Been a while.
Yeah. I'm here to present to you the proposed budget for the fund department for 2021. We have a few changes. We did build in some money there for overtime. We wanted to keep that in line with what actually was happening within the department. We have a little bit of increase on our data processing. That is for our financial software maintenance agreement. So we do see that go up occasionally, so we just want to build that in as well. Other than that, the only other change is that we've, we'll see what there would be with education and training and our conferences and our conventions. So there again, we are hopeful that we will be able to gather together again for, you know, for conferences, you know, our annual CASL conference and some of our Government Finance Officers Association conferences, be able to go back to those again next year. And we always see a slight increment, increase in those things every year. And the same with our education and training. We hope to be able to get back into providing more training for staff to attend. It's always great, of course, to have that visual training, but I, I still don't think, you just can't beat that in person. So, so that's why we kind of built a little bit of increase in there. So other than that, it's pretty much business as usual. We still do have plans to still bring onboard another general accountant. So you will see that when it comes salary time. So I just want to mention that. So, and that's another reason why we did want to make that increase in that education and training and conferences to allow for that additional staff member. So, any questions?
I don't see any at the moment.
Okay. I do have also the perpetual care budget, if you'd like to. We're moving outside of the general fund, I understand. But do you have that with you?
Yeah.
Okay. If you wouldn't mind, I'd like to just go ahead and present that one this evening, too.
It's the very last sheet of your budget packet.
Okay. Refund 021, the perpetual care. There again, this is the required restricted funds that we have to maintain for those purchases of the cemetery plots and niches. Not much really changing, other than we did build in that we do have transfer between banks. Basically, what happens is when someone pays for a lot in that 40% that is supposed to be held out for perpetual care, goes into our general operating account. And since we cannot commingle those funds, those need to be moved out of that bank, out of that particular bank where that cash was recognized, into a perpetual care account for that fund accounting. So that's why that's there. You'll see a line in the revenue, and you'll see a line in the expense, and they just wash each other out. So there again, that's just to keep, keep, keep on top of things, keep the accounting correct, and keep the money in the correct fund. So not a whole lot of change there, other than that. Okay? Any questions on that?
None for me.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thanks, Chris.
You bet.
Okay, city clerk, John?
Thanks, Steve. The city clerk budget is pretty boring. It's, there's not much to it. A few changes. We put a little additional funding in for legal notices with it being an election year. Next year, there's always some additional costs related to that. Backed down a little bit on office supplies and expense because we didn't seem to be reaching that based on the history. Records management, we've got a new company and, for doing our records destruction, that's much cheaper than the old one. That $10,000 from, in the current budget, was for a project that has been kind of sidelined as we look more at a holistic, citywide kind of records management program. $20,000 is traditionally what we budget for an election. Next year, we'll have candidate election... Next year, we'll have candidate elections, and so we've put that back in there again. Education and training, most of that probably will be for Jill, who's going through the certification, clerk certification. And the $500 for conferences and conventions, I think, is for the CCCMA Conference. Other than that, everything's pretty much the same. And I also have another one, General Government, 001419. If you guys don't mind flipping back to that. It's a pretty short one.
That's the second to the last page of your packet.
And it, this general government fund is for this building, Historic City Hall, basically. So we have office supplies that cover, you know, all the people that work in this, in this building, as well as office supplies related to the city council. Utilities, we've traditionally always budgeted $18,000. I don't know why we did 17 this past year, but those vary somewhat. Maintenance, general property, I think they've always put $25,000 in there just in case because things break down. A few years ago, you could see that $40,000. I think that must have been when a boiler went out. So we try to keep that funded. And I know that Steve, I wasn't at the last meeting, but I know that Steve had put some money into the budget for some deferred maintenance in this building as well, but that'll be in the capital budget, I think.
Right. Okay.
Thanks, John.
Thanks, John. Okay, so we'll go to the city attorney budget. This is, again, another one we've just zeroed out. So thank you, Jeff. I appreciate your time. Now, this one's pretty simple. This is really just one, one line item. Toward the bottom there is engineering and consulting law firm, and you can see that line item at $225,000. I think we're trying to track those bills a little bit, and that seems to be more in line with what we're seeing utilization of the attorney's office. So Jeff can probably answer any questions if you have those, but I think that's a, I think that's a good line item for them, so. Yeah. That one's pretty simple. Okay. Well, the next one would be the airport, so that's Brent.
No matter how many times Steve keeps giving me the airport, I can't give it back. So straightforward with this one. This is one of your unique ones that doesn't have any salaries or anything associated with it, so what you see is pretty much what you get. There's just a couple of requested increases just due to general aging of equipment and some of the facilities that the city owns out there that need some additional work. There was one capital request that is in the capital budget, and that's for the hangar door needs desperately replaced. And so that'll be in the capital budget. But other than that, I could try to answer any questions or ask Steve to.
AWAS is in there, too. There's a large expense for replacing the AWAS as well, about 200 grand to do that. That's the weather station that's up there. We're required to maintain an AWAS up there.
That's where the pilots can call in.
The pilots contacted.
And get the wind direction.
Right.
And all that.
Yeah. The one we have is very antiquated. Can't even get parts for it now, so.
So we're pretty good on most of the other, the card readers, the fueling system.
Yep.
The stuff on the building is completed?
It is. They wanted to do some other things. There's still money in the budget, and they've replaced the windows up there, or finished installing the windows up there. The interior's all done. They wanted to put some stucco or some stonework on the outside, kind of spruce up the outside. I believe that's been done, and I'm not sure that's going to get done this year. But other than that, I think, you know, the aprons are placed now, the runway will get, it'll get a surface treatment next year. That's also in the capital budget, but 80% of that's paid by the state, so. But outside of that, yeah, everything is really in pretty good shape. We've seen a lot of hangers built up there, new hangers, and so there's, there's good growth in that area, so. But yeah, I think for the most part, other than just, you know, the equipment we have is a little old, and that's why you see some of those increases that Brent mentioned. But outside of that, I think most of the, most of the airport's in pretty good shape.
No questions for me.
You're good to go, sir.
All right. Thanks, Brent. And I think the last one in this packet is human resources and risk management. Susan, last but not least.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm presenting the HR budget, which is pretty much the same as last year. The only changes I've made to this is in employment expenses. I did take out some of the outside-of-the-box background checks to be charged off to the individual departments as needed. Other than that, I kind of, I think I added another $400 to conferences and conventions. We're looking at doing a few more next year. We weren't able to do the training like we wanted to this year, so I just bumped that up a little bit. HR does house a couple of things on behalf of the entire city, and those would be in the employee recognition fund. That's where we plan our special events, service awards, that kind of thing, that comes out of there. And the wellness program is also housed in here. We do biometrics, flu shots, wellness things out of there. And then the other thing that we do house is the tuition assistance program for the entire city, so our employees can get some schooling, and we will reimburse them for tuition, up to $1,500 per year.
So cool.
That's it.
Thank you.
Thanks, Susan. So that's the first of the general fund. We'll have a bunch more the next meeting, including Police Department and Parks and Recreation and all of those other funds, so.
Next item on our agenda is the consent agenda. Mr. Brennan?
Thank you, Your Honor. Tonight's consent agenda includes Item A, approval of the disbursements and payroll for July, and Item B, approval of the minutes of the August 4th, 2020 city council regular meeting. All matters on the consent agenda are considered routine business by the council and will be enacted with a single motion and a single vote by roll call. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If discussion is deemed necessary, that item should be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately.
I would entertain a resolution.
Your Honor, I offer a resolution to accept the consent agenda.
Second? Have a resolution by Allison Howe, a second by Doug Sashow. Vote by roll call.
That resolution carries on a vote of six to zero with Councilmember Lindell having left the meeting, I believe.
I believe he did. Public comment or audience participation for items not on the agenda?
Evening, Mr. Stroh.
Don't need to sign in at all anymore?
Nah, you're just, it's not on the agenda, so.
Okay. I just wanted to approach the city. I know I've spoken with some of you independently back in July 23rd, when the governor issued a state order not allowing liquor license establishments to serve after 10:00 PM any longer. And I'd spoken with some of you about whether the city would be open to applying maybe alongside the county, or independently, if the council would be open to the suggestion of applying for a variance. In the event the governor extends that, I think in his initial release, he said that he thought it was a stupid law, I believe is what he said, something to that effect, and that he thought the law needed reviewed. So in the event he extends that, or does change the law as it's written that allows licensed establishments to serve until 2:00 AM, if the council would be open to the suggestion of applying for a variance, allowing us to operate under the normal business hours that we always have until the 2:00 AM, should he change that going forward. I didn't see any news releases today as to whether he extended that. I know it went into effect July 23rd for a 30-day period, which will run till this Saturday, I believe, the 22nd. But I haven't heard any updates as to whether that's been extended or not.
And I know he waited until the end of, or close to the end of the mask debacle to extend the mandatory mask portion of it, so.
I don't know whether to expect answers.
Can't take any action or really.
Just wanted to put it out there at least, and make you aware of it if you weren't already. It's pretty detrimental to our, our location, definitely. I'm sure it is to the others that are biting by it, so.
A lot of small businesses.
Yeah. Thank you for your time.
You bet. You bet. Thank you.
Thanks, Ryan.
We will take that and see where he, where he goes with it. Any other public comment? Reports by officials and staff?
Okay, just a few things to comment on, Mayor. First of all, we've had some questions about the utility billing lobby area and when that might open back up to pedestrian traffic. We're working hard to get that to happen. It's been really difficult to find both material and contractors that can come in and actually extend that either Plexiglas or glass area that would separate the staff from, you know, those folks, the patrons that are coming in to pay their bills or inquire about their bills. I know Sam, our on-staff guy, is working really hard to try to get that done. And as soon as we can get some of those improvements in place, then we're anxious to open that up as well. And hopefully before fall, when the weather turns. That's our concern, is that folks would be kind of, if you will, left out in the cold trying to conduct their business. We struggled with that when the building department, you know, had to close, and we were trying to operate through a little window. It is a little more difficult. So rest assured that we're working really hard and wanted to get that out in the public as well. We're working as hard and as fast as we can to get that lobby open back up so that we can, you know, pay attention to the restrictions that are out there and keep everybody safe, including our staff. So just wanted to give you a quick update on that and more to come. Secondly, Sarah and I begun our business walks downtown. We had the opportunity to go down and visit four businesses last week, and excited to meet some business folks. We were at Zazzy Cafe and All About You, Padink's and Pa's Thrift Store. And we're looking to do four more, I think, next week. I don't know who's on the list, but Sarah's done a good job of reaching out to those businesses and getting us in their door, and that's been well received. So we're excited to have started that process downtown.
Very good.
Had the opportunity to attend the ribbon cutting for Poplar Hall at MCC. What was that, a couple of days ago? About 105 degrees outside, 2:30 in the afternoon. But it was well attended, and just excited to see MCC open that building and offer that program here in Fort Morgan. So we congratulate them on getting that building open, and I think students went in there today and started classes. So very exciting for them, and we're excited for them. And then lastly, I know we've got, we've had a few groundbreakings, and we have another one to announce. This is the Loomis Eye Care Center has broken ground out at Center Point. They're located on the corner of Saunders and Platte Avenue, and they actually are going to have a shovel groundbreaking event on August 28th at 12:30. So we would invite folks out to that and celebrate another business opening here in Fort Morgan soon. Lot of activity out in Center Point. Fieldhouse is going strong, and all of the floor has been poured at this point, and so we're just waiting on the steel building to show up, and you'll start to see that come out of the ground. Things are happening at Center Point Square. A lot of activity in that corner where they've cut in all the roads already and the ponds, and we'll be starting utility work there soon as well, so, on the apartments. So a lot of good stuff happening in Fort Morgan. We're very excited, so. A few updates from me. I'll look to the group if anybody has anything else. Nope? Okay. I think that's it. Can I answer any questions or anything out there that?
I saw they canceled the fall rec.
Our program's canceled based on just the restrictions that are out there in place. Much similar to, I think, what we're seeing just even across the nation, where they're canceling football and, you know, colleges are canceling all of their football programs and various things. We're just trying to keep everybody as safe as possible. So unfortunately, we've had to do that, and hopefully we can pick things back up in the spring.
I know Chaz is doing golf, softball, tennis, and cross-country. When we were at the school, the teacher thing this morning, I was talking to the AD at the middle school, and he said there's 60 kids for cross-country now because there's no football and volleyball.
Wow.
Can we do anything alternative?
Yeah, I don't know. I can.
Offering besides just volleyball and?
Yeah, good question. I'll visit with Ty and the rest of the team and see if there's something we may be able to offer in that regard.
Okay.
They opened up a youth league for disc golf, which is super, like, perfect as far as social distancing outside, so kudos to Steve. He's still here. I actually signed up one of my kids today, so.
So is that why you want to have money to recover the discs from the?
Yeah.
Right?
It's true. But get this, Finn lost one in like the rushes on the optimist side, and someone called him today that found his disc to return it. So lots of good things in the world.
Yeah.
There is.
Yeah.
Yep. Is there anything else I can answer, or anything on your mind? Okay. Thank you very much.
I had one thing that I wanted to bring up. I've had a couple of people that have called me and caught me on the streets in bringing up the comments regarding defunding or reallocating funds for our police department to other I just, and this is me speaking, there is no way I will support any reappropriation of funds from our police department or reallocating it elsewhere. Our police department is an integral part of the public safety. They do a fantastic job, as do a lot of, all of the Morgan County law enforcement. I will stand behind our police department 100% on my own if I have to. But at no time will I ever come up and defund or reallocate funds that we need for our public safety. I made that exact same comment to the individuals that had brought it up. There was a couple of phone calls that don't give their name, and they had, or a restricted number, so be it. But just publicly, that is my stance on that. So I'm a thin blue-line individual. They are what we need to keep all of you as citizens, and I don't care race, creed, color, or preferences of any sorts. The police department is here for your protection and needs. And there's, I will not support defunding or reallocating for them. As a matter of fact, if it comes down to it, and I've had my discussion or brought my point of view to them, I would increase the overtime pay on them if they... brought my point of view to, to them, I would increase the overtime pay on them if they needed for it. So it's, it's a sad state that we live in at this point in time. And I know Denver City Council had a meeting or did last night where they were looking to reallocate or redo their police department as a peace force. It got defeated, but I don't know the, what it was defeated on. But I just wanted to make that comment because I've had more than four contacts asking about it, and I've given them this exact same answer. So that's my point of view and my feelings.
All right, second that totally.
Couldn't agree more with you, Mayor, on that.
So give your guys a kudos and tell them we will support them in their needs and endeavors. And as I said, that goes for the entire Morgan County law enforcement agencies. I think they do a good job for our communities and county, so.
Well, thank you, Mayor, and definitely appreciate the public support that we get. I think regardless of what agency you work for within this county and even Northeast Colorado is, I think that's pretty much the, the view from the public in general. We like to think that if there's issues out there, that we address those. We try and keep them open to mind as to what those issues are and rely on the public to bring those issues to us. But I think in general, we've always done that. And I think it's because of recent events with law enforcement in general that we, we haven't seen those issues. And I frankly don't foresee seeing those issues. Everybody has their own opinion on stuff and more than willing to take that on and address them and get down to true facts and not base everything on emotions. But it does start with community support. And I'm appreciative to, you know, be from, grew up in Fort Morgan and, you know, being law enforcement here. It's fairly simple here compared to definitely a lot of other places, not just in Colorado, but nationwide as well.
Okay. I would just end with, if you don't want a negative interaction with the law enforcement, don't do stupid stuff. And if you do do stupid stuff, don't resist it and be stupid. Bids, meetings, and announcements. Mr. Brennan?
Thank you, Your Honor. The city is accepting sealed bids for city complex building roof repairs until 3:00 PM on August 25th. Sealed bids for MDT outfit for fifteen police patrol vehicles. Sealed bids for fiberglass poles until 3:00 PM on September 2nd. Bids for the demolition of houses and farm buildings project until 3:00 PM on September 3rd. And sealed bids for police department evidence building project until 3:00 PM on September 9th. Under meetings, the Museum Heritage Foundation is scheduled to meet on the 27th at 4:00 PM in the museum community room. And the next city council regular meeting will be September 1st at 6:00 PM here at City Hall.
Okay. With nothing else coming before this council meeting, this meeting's adjourned. See you, Clint.